Call the role to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Royal, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sabby George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley,
Present.
And Counselor Wu. Mr. President, you're almost here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the president pro tempore of the Boston City Council. Today is November 3, 2021. Welcome to our proceedings. Once again, to our counselors and guests, we request that you please have a mask on unless you are speaking. And before we get to our clergy, please join me as the proponent of the chair of congratulating the mayor-elect of the City of Boston, City Counselor Michelle Wu. And also, please join me in welcoming and thanking our dear colleague and our friend and exceptional leader for the City of Boston, City Counselor-at-Large Anisa Sabby George. We will get into more speeches later in the meeting, but I just wanted to kick things off of just remarking about our two absolutely exemplary public servants that were lucky enough to call colleagues and even more fortunate to call friends. Madam Clerk, would you please now kick this meeting off by delivering the invocation on behalf of City Counselor Andrea Campbell?
Thank you. Blessed are the just, for they have their reward in indestructible integrity. Blessed are they who labor in the vineyards of the public realm, for they shall be remembered. Blessed are they who love their nation enough to praise its strengths and criticize its weaknesses, for they shall be made wise. Blessed are public officials who are responsible to the needs of these, the least of the people, for they shall be deputies of the community. Blessed are they who serve the public good, for their reward is in being used. Blessed are the powerful who acknowledge their power as both gift and responsibility, for they know the binding obligation of their bounty. Blessed are they who rebuke narrow self-interest to sustain the common will, for they are the patriots the nation needs. As we commence this afternoon, we especially ask for your blessing upon the members of the Boston City Council as they continue their good work on behalf of the people of this city on a hill.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for those inspiring words. Would now invite you, if you are able, to please stand as Counselor Campbell leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First off, some housekeeping. We are having some technical difficulties with your call button, so we are going to revert to the old days where you will raise your hand if you wish to speak. I will call on you. Carrie Jordan will then activate your microphone and just please keep your hands raised until we get to you if there are numerous speakers. Also, wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge another new someone who had a very good day yesterday, the Counselor-elect Aaron Murphy, City Counselor-at-Large-elect Aaron Murphy. Welcome, Counselor-elect. We are now on to the first order of the business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion, no raised hands on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. The meeting of the last the minutes, rather, of the last meeting stand as approved. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, to communications from her honor, the mayor. Would you please read docket 1145 into the record?
Certainly. Docket 1145, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount not to exceed $400,000 from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, known as EOEEA, Division of Conservation Service Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities, known as the PAC program. The grant is awarded to the City of Boston through the Parks and Recreation Department for renovations to Winter Playground located in the neighborhood of Dorchester.
Thank you. Docket 1145 will be referred to the Committee on Environment, Resiliency, and Parks. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 1146?
Docket 1146, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount not to exceed $387,164 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, for the parkland acquisition and renovation for communities known as the PAC program grant, to be administered by the Boston Parks and Recreation Department. The grant will fund the acquisition of two parcels on the western shore of Sprague Pond at 0 to 4 Lakeside Avenue in High Park as a permanently protected parkland to be known as the Sprague Pond Shoreline Reserve.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1146 will be referred to the Committee on Environment, Resiliency, and Parks. Reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, could you please read dockets 1147 through 1151?
Thank you. Docket 1147, notice as you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Justin Sterrett as trustee of the Boston Common Maintenance Trust Fund. Docket number 1148, notice as you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Justin Sterrett as trustee to the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund. Docket number 1149, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the application for the report and decision on the 11th Amendment to the report and decision on Landmark Center Chapter 121A project. Docket 1150, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 20, 2021. And docket number 1151, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 27, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 1147 through 1151 will be placed on file. Moving along to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 1152?
Docket 1152, Counselor Bach offered the following resolution supporting key safety improvements on the Massachusetts Avenue Bridge.
Remember, I will call on you in a second, Counselor Bach, but if you'd like to speak on this or any other issue, you're going to have to raise your hand so I can alert Carrie, who will then control the microphone. So the Chair recognizes the district counselor from Beacon Hill, Counselor Kenzie Bach. The floor is yours on docket 1152.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This item concerns the Mass Ave Bridge. Folks may also know it as the Harvard Bridge or the MIT Bridge. It's a really key connector between Cambridge and Boston. It runs into Boston, that my district. And both our city and the city of Cambridge have on either side of it implemented substantial new bicycle infrastructure in the last few years. But the bridge itself remains very unsafe for bicyclists. And there's been a bunch of concerning activity, and it gets very heavy utilization from bikes. And they did some radar speed measurements, and about 100% of vehicles are exceeding the 25 mile per hour posted speed limit on the bridge with a median speed of 41 miles per hour during daytime hours. So, you know, the cyclists are about 20% of the bridge traffic. For me, for a couple of years, this was my sister's route commuting from Boston into Cambridge on her bike. And it was definitely the part of it that we worried the most about. And my walk up the Esplanade regularly takes me by it. And I just, I see really scary stuff. And also, there's a lot of blue bike folks who are relatively often like novice bicyclists, who they, that's the connection they need to make between Cambridge and Boston, but it is quite scary. So the push in the long term is to get Mass Dot, this is a bridge that's in state custody, to do more permanent infrastructure. But in the immediate term, this resolution is actually about making a reduction from four to three general travel lanes and putting up some flex posts just before the construction season. So it's really about doing something for safety right now on the bridge that will carry through the winter into the spring and then the state taking a further process. And so it's not something that we can do as BTD. But Cambridge passed a similar resolution last week. And I, for one, certainly stand with the advocates and residents who are really looking for a pretty immediate safety fix on this, on this bridge. So I would love to have the council's support for this. Ask to them with frankly, a pretty urgent deadline, since the work would need to be done by before December. And then also support, of course, for the longer-term vision of making this critical connection in the regional bike network. So thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. And just to be clear, you are seeking suspension of the rules.
I did have suspension of the rules and adoption.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston, Counselor Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Please add my name. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Michael Flaherty's name. Would anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Would anyone else wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sabby George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair, as well as Counselor Wu. And Counselor Kenzie Bach seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1152. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket is hereby adopted. Congratulations, Counselor Bach. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 1153?
Thank you. Docket 1153, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution recognizing November 2021 as Youth and Young Adult Homeless Awareness Month.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Anisa Sabby George, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today, we are recognizing November as Youth and Young Adults Homelessness Awareness Month. Recognizing this month and raising awareness of youth and young adults homelessness gives voice to the countless young people in our city who are living in some of the most challenging experiences of their lives. It gives us a moment to pause and to see their experience so that we can hold it in our hearts and minds as we move forward and work to address the challenges our city is facing. It is estimated that every year, one in 10 young people within the ages of 18 to 25 will experience some form of homelessness. And the risk for these young adults to find themselves in this vulnerable situation continues to increase by 2% daily. 74% of young adults experiencing homelessness identify as BIPOC and 35% as LGBTQIA+. These young adults are 87% more likely to drop out of school. Many of these young people have spent time in the foster care system. Recognizing this month is also an opportunity to thank the organizations and individuals that do this work every day to end youth and young adults homelessness and support the individuals who are experiencing it. I once again would like to acknowledge the countless groups and organizations and the work that they do every single day to ensure that young adults experiencing homelessness have the access to the resources and the supports they need. But above all, I want to thank them for all of their efforts to end this, especially here in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sabby George. Would anyone else wish to speak on docket 1153? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor on docket 1153? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair. Please add Counselor Wu. And Counselor Anisa Sabby George is seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1153. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket is hereby adopted. Congratulations, Counselor Sabby George. Moving right along, we have a number of personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 1154?
Docket 1154, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Mejia.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1154. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed.
Docket number 1155, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Bach.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1155. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed.
Docket number 1156, Counselor O'Malley offered the following order.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1156. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed.
Docket 1157, Counselor O'Malley offered the following order.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1157. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We are now moving on to late files, and I'm informed by the clerk that we have one late-file matter, a personnel order. We are first voting on whether or not to accept this late-file order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The late-file matter is properly before us. And Madam Clerk, would you now please read the one late-file matter which is personnel in nature and presented to the body?
Thank you. In the Boston City Council, November 3, 2021, Counselor Matt O'Malley for Counselor Sabby George.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file docket, which is a personnel order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The late-file personnel order has passed. Would anybody now wish to remove any matter from the green sheets? We are at the green sheets portion of our meeting. Seeing no takers. We're now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now entering the announcements period. And this is a little unusual because those observing and watching, and some of our newer colleagues as well, we typically will thank and if we so wish, offer remarks on a counselor on his or her last day. And today is Counselor Wu's last day as a city counselor. She'll be sworn in. Two weeks from yesterday, I believe, is the date of the official oath of office. So if you'll indulge me, I'll begin. And then others can just raise their hand to just, again, congratulate you, Michelle. That was absolutely remarkable. Unsurprising, having known you as I do, just someone who is so tough and smart and hardworking and loves this city. Just absolutely loves this city. And I'm going to really miss you as a colleague, but I'm really excited that you will be our mayor. You're going to do some great things. And we've spent eight years together now, mostly sitting next to one another. And I often say, people don't believe me, but this body really is like a family. We can be a dysfunctional family at times. Do not get me wrong. But I think about not only knowing you as a colleague, but getting to know you as a person. I remember it was right near Michael Flaherty's seat when I sat there when you came over after council meeting to tell me that you and Connor were expecting your first son. And just what a story. And then similarly, when Catherine and I had that great opportunity to share with you and your support for my family during some tough times and just your friendship. You've just been a great, dear, wonderful friend to me, an amazing city counselor, an absolutely tenacious leader. And you are going to do some great things for the city. I will very much miss you as a colleague, but I'm really excited to now call you my mayor. Congratulations. But anyone else wish to make an announcement? The Chair recognizes the district counselor from East Boston, Counselor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
I have two comments.
Okay.
I want to echo the congrats to Michelle, but I also want to bring in my sisters in service who welcomed me when I came into this body. And there is a famous cover on a book of the six of us. The six of us. Love you, girls. Love you. But there is that cover done, and it was with Ayanna at the time. And I just, we have to smile about it. Remember, we took the picture. We were all late that day.
Surprise.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We were all late that day. You guys decided to pay us back by being late another day. We got it. We got it. And it was such a big celebration. Remember the road show? And they put us out there. And they had us on so many different places because of the historic, big deal. There were six of us. And so I want to congratulate you two especially, Anisa and Andrea. When you became city council president and helped me become Chair of Housing, the leadership, the vision, the push, and I thank you for uplifting me. Anisa, you are my dear friend. And you have grounded me when I was going to go. Absolutely insane. If colleagues came in here and I was doing a turf war, you calmed me down. When I wanted to deal with certain things a certain way, you pulled me back. And when I lost the love of my life, you held me down. And so there's so much to celebrate. But if you don't see how the leadership of these women also is part of us being able to have this woman depart and be the leader of the city at this moment, I just have to bring them in. They were so much a part of my leadership and empowerment. And I want to congratulate you for that. I want to thank you for that. And if it has not been said enough, you are an amazing woman. The other announcement I want to make, and it has to do with everybody in this body. After 112 years, ladies and gentlemen of the Boston City Council, we have changed the charter of the City of Boston. All of us voted for that change. It was a historic milestone. This is not a moment to do anything but celebrate how much more democratic our city has become. Our ability to go back and forth with our mayor, regardless of who that person is, is permanent. It is not a matter of democracy being donated in the current system that we have with participatory budgeting. It is required now in our constitution. The people of Boston have spoken. We said resoundingly yes on one after 112 years of not being able to go back and forth, of not being able to be transparent and open, of not being able to be held accountable. We'll be able to be nimble in a way on our budget. We will be able to communicate directly with people who are holding us accountable. And I just want to thank every single one of you because this is our victory, the Boston City Council. All of you said yes on one, took that chance, as crazy as it was and sounded, and said, let's do it. I do want to recognize some of the other individuals who are part of that as well. David Sullivan, Peter Enrich, my staffers, Jesse, Joel, Ricardo, Michael, Gabriella, Judy. I just, my staff has been holding me down as well, and I wanted to acknowledge them. And I'm forgetting Yamina, who just joined us. I'm sorry. Christine McDonald, I want to thank you as well, Christine, for your research and back and forth. I know you feel uncomfortable when you're being thanked publicly, but I'm going to do it anyway. I want to thank Armani White, Andreas Castillo, Nube, Right to the City, Kansas Progressive Association, Families for Justice and Healing, Erin Tanaka. I want to thank Mel King. And I want to thank Chuck Turner, who was in one of our first charter talks where we talked about this specifically. I'm sure I'm forgetting people, but there are people who've been there from the very beginning. And thank you for making history, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselors, we should, the Chair recognizes the district counselor from Beacon Hill. Counselor Kenzie Bach, the floor is yours. Just wait for, there you go.
Oh, right. Okay. I wasn't mentally prepared for this exercise, but I, I think what I want to say is that the bridge across the fifth floor doesn't have to be so long. You don't even need a bike lane on it. And I, I just think, to me, one of the things that I'm so excited about with Michelle and one of the reasons why, in some ways, saying our farewells as though the council is an island today feels superfluous is that I think that the, the hope embodied in your administration is so much one of collaboration and one of the council and the mayor being able to work together and not losing sight of the fact that the challenges we have right now in the city and the resources that we have available to muster to meet them, it has to be a joint effort. Like, it just, it has to be bigger than Michelle. It has to be not everybody just sitting back and saying like, gee, she's got a heavy lift ahead. Like, it's, it's got to be collective. And I'm really excited about that. And I think that actually the charter change that Lydia has led on and so many advocates that she just listed has led on, it's a, it's another opportunity to re-envision the way that our chamber works together with the administration on all these critical things. So, so I, I'm almost pointedly against framing this as some kind of a farewell because I think we're, we're hoping to all be working so much and so frequently together. And, and I'll, I'll save my remarks on others for another time, but I, I'll just say that I'm in the same boat of being somebody who Michelle actively encouraged to get involved in this neck of the woods. And also, she answered my really long emails And also, she answered my really long emails when I was just a constituent really early on, very graciously. And, and I just think that's the thing about, about collaboration. I think like when you approach things collaboratively instead of transactionally, like with a transaction, you know what you're getting. With a collaboration, there's so much more that you don't even imagine when you first do the outreach. And I think that's a lot of what Michelle you bring to your relationships and your work. And I'm so excited to see the kind of, the fruit that that, that that bears in the next role. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston. Counselor Michael Flaherty, the floor is yours. Just wait for your light from Kerry. It's Counselor Mike, there you go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first say to our colleague and his source of issues, I've been in that same spot, putting it all out in the field and then coming up a little short. But the sun came up this morning, the sun will come up tomorrow. You will find ways to, to, to contribute to our city, to help our city, and, and in your own time, that path. And that could be elective office, I came back to the council, or it could be in some other capacity. But please know that the issues that you fought for while here and that you care about, schoolchildren, the Boston Public Schools, our, our substance abuse, opioid crisis, and mental health and homelessness will be issues that your colleagues here will carry on out of respect for your hard work and your effort. And you'll be obviously dialing in regularly to keep us focused on those issues as well. So, my best obviously to your family, to Doug and your kids because I know that feeling of coming up a little short and your spouse and your children being right there with you every step of the way. So, keep your head up and keep contributing to our city. And our city will keep contributing to you as well. And to Michelle, we're intertwined. And when I came back to the council, she was seeking to come on the council. And from the first time I met Michelle, I found her immediately to be, to be humble, to be gracious, to be likable. But most importantly, when, and you all know this, when she gives her word, when she commits to something, whether it's a vote or there's a piece of legislation, you can take it to the bank and she never wavers. And so, our hope is working together as mayor. She's going to be making some commitments and she's got some bold challenges in front of us is that she's committed to following through on that. I've got a couple that I'm going to put on her right away. She needs to get the five car Flaherty off my back once and for all. And, but working together, obviously, we're going to, we're going to continue to do that. And so, we're going to miss her here on the council in the spirit of cooperation that she brought when she joined the council. And I almost feel like an Irish uncle to her kids in many forms. I was babysitting Cass and Blaze and they were crawling all around the place and recognizing that as a working mother, she was committing to this job. And that as colleagues, all of us were pitching in and helping her make sure that she fulfilled that commitment to the city. So, we're going to miss you here, but I'm not going to need a car to go over to see you over there, for sure. But know that the spirit and the cooperation that you brought here is what we expect that will continue. Sometimes some things happen when folks go on to that side of the building, you know? And I'm hopeful that that's not going to happen because it's not in her character. She's decent to the core. She's humble, she's gracious, she wants to work with folks. And she wants to make our city better. And so, I'm committed to doing that with her. I'm sure we're all committed to doing that with her. And I wish you the very best of luck in your new endeavor. We will clearly miss you here on the council. I'll clearly miss you as a council colleague. But I have you as a friend and I have you as our mayor and look forward to supporting it. And God bless you and your family, well, Connor and Blaze and Cass as well. So, congratulations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the district council from South Boston. Counselor Ed Flynn, the floor is yours. Just wait for the, yeah, there you go, your light's up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to echo what Counselor Flaherty mentioned about Counselor Sabi George and her family. Most difficult thing in, in politics or as an elected official is losing an election. So, we, we know how that feels and the impact it has on, on children or, and a spouse and a family. So, it's, it's not about losing an election. It's about coming back from a defeat and, and working hard and continuing to make a contribution to the, to the city. But we know the, the pain of, of losing an election. So, we just wanted to acknowledge that Counselor Sabi George, that we've all been, been there. And it's not, it's not a good feeling, not a good feeling, but we, we know that there's, Boston is resilient because we bounced back. I also wanted to highlight the historic victory of Counselor Wu and her hard work and determination in representing the city for, for so many years. But what I admired about Counselor Wu is her decency and her commitment to the residents in treating people, fairly treating people, respecting dignity. So, I know you're going to be an excellent mayor. You're going to be an excellent leader because you're an excellent colleague to all of us here. And you listened. So, not only is it a historic day for the city, but it's also a historic day for Boston's proud immigrant roots. So, you're going to be an outstanding mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Seeing anyone else wishing to speak before we move on? No, yeah. Okay. Seeing no takers. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure. The chair recognizes the mayor-elect from the city of Boston, Counselor Michelle Wu. The floor is yours. There you go.
I, I just wanted to say that this space means so much to me because of all of the, all of the, the stories, the legislative battles, the passionate advocacy that the members of this body have put all out there. When I first joined the council, I had no idea what I was doing whatsoever. And it was really the, the body then, being able to bridge the traditions that the city represents and the history that we carry as elected officials in this incredible city with the push to make sure that we are continuously bringing more people into the conversation, representing more and more of Boston, putting more issues on the table. And I just want to thank each and every colleague for the many, many ways in which I have been inspired by the council reshaping what's possible in our city and pushing to truly show that at the city level, we earn the trust that seems to be missing from so many other places in our political conversation and in government because we are there getting things done, brick by brick, pothole by pothole, ordinance by ordinance. So, I, I will just take a spin around as, as I've, in respect of tradition, and to just say a quick thank you. Although, as many people have mentioned, we're going to be on the same text chain. I just, I would like to not be maybe part of the compliment chain, that President O'Malley forces us to do all the time. Although, yes, I will have many compliments to share. To Counselor Royo, who isn't here right now, but my district counselor, it's been just amazing to see his advocacy and fearlessness when it comes to tackling issues of racial equity and speaking out for residents who have not seen themselves represented in these spaces for far too long. Counselor Baker has been an inspiration when it comes to always ensuring that family is part of every conversation. And no matter what policy issue we're talking about or is happening in the council, I know that I can have a conversation with Frank about how his kids are doing. And he lights up conversation about how his family is and, and how his community and neighbors are. And he lights up because he's involved in so many of the little ways that people need help that no cameras will ever capture. And so, I just want to thank you, Frank, for what you do that goes unsaid constantly for decades and decades in, in this community and how much you've built up Boston through that. Counselor Bach, I'm very happy that you finally decided to heed the incessant pushing from several of us, I think, on the council that you should run. And we are so glad that you did in your leadership of the committee certainly, but in so many conversations has made sure that we are bridging that history with the details of city government that make more possible in the city. I'm really grateful for your friendship and for the many ways in which you keep me sane about this world that we are in. And similarly, always just see your heart and see the commitment you have to recognizing the best in people and ensuring that that is part of every policy conversation that we have. Counselor Braden, always in the purple mask, I love it. When you speak, we all listen, no matter what venue that's in, on Zoom, on the chamber, on the council floor, because you carry such conviction and such passion for making sure that everyone's voices are part of this. It was amazing to watch you build a movement within your district and, and really redefine what, what is possible, the role of a district city counselor, the role of organizing and community building. And to see that continue now as more and more is happening in your district that I see community members directly empowered to act on because you have been that connector for them. Counselor Campbell, it's been amazing to not only serve alongside you, to pass the gavel over to you several years ago, to watch the ways in which you fight for accountability for those who may never have the chance to come testify in these chambers, for those who feel that they've given up on government. You've been their champion. And I know you will continue to be that champion, continue to hold all of us accountable. And so, I'm so honored to have been part of this moment in Boston's history alongside you and alongside the field. Counselor Edwards is a partner for good and for trouble in many ways. And we have seen in very public spaces, the tenacity that she brings to her legislative fights. I've seen it in closed-door settings as well. And she's the same wherever she is because she's going to fight for her constituents. She's going to fight for the city of Boston to get exactly what we deserve. And your leadership in the committee role has been amazing. I don't know how you balance so many different pieces of legislation and the detail flying this way and that way, but it's been incredible to partner alongside you. Counselor Sabi George, we have been on the council together for many, many years. And to see your example as a mom who's just going to get it done no matter how many things are on the plate with the kids, with community, with your dedication to showing up in every space, no matter how many people are going to be at a meeting, no matter if any of the attendees are voters because they're kids at a hockey rink or on the field, you're there. And you've shown up for Boston time and again. And so, I want to thank you for the love of Boston that radiates out of everything that you do. Counselor Flaherty, I will help you debunk. Michael does not have five cars anymore. And he only had that many at one point because I was constantly asking him for a ride to places. So, we will settle that once and for all. Thank you for being such a font of wisdom on the history of this body. And always, no matter how high the temperature is in politics, you're always someone I've been able to go to, to have that perspective, to be able to say, this is, this is what matters in this situation. Here's how you refocus on really getting back to helping people and not getting bogged down in, in the noise. When I've been in those cars with, in your car with you, being, you know, going to this or that event because I didn't have a, a car, it was never a straight ride because you were constantly being stopped by people who would shout when you're driving and then say, thank you for helping me with this issue or can you help me with this or that one? And that's who you are to the core. So, I really am with that. Counselor Flynn, you've always been, before anyone asks, the biggest champion for ensuring that our immigrant communities are represented, that they are counted and seen and heard and part of the conversation, taking down the barriers for language access and the many ways in which we feel invisible in many ways. And so, I've so enjoyed getting to watch you in this role and sharing constituents that are so grateful for how you're in these spaces even when they're not able to be here. And so, I hope we will keep doing our dim sums where you order your, your fried chicken and I'll get the, I'll get the tripe. But, thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Mahia, I want to thank you for your fearlessness. In every space, there is no question, I've been with you out in community and the way people just trust you to the core because they know you are fighting for them even when they're not watching, even when they don't, when no one else is seeing what you're doing. They are in these spaces with you and you're always 100% clear on that. So, I just, I so elevate and, and just lift up your clarity, your passion for community. I thank you for conversations that we've had with accountability and ensuring that the ways in which we move in and out of community align with what we're doing in this space. And I look forward to continuing to, to build that as, as you will become a mentor to many who are entering this space in, in the next year. President O'Malley, you are one of the few who's been here longer than me. And I look up to you in, in terms of understanding how to do the work, but how to do the work in a way that continues to connect us and bring us in. And in your tenure as president pro tempore, you have transformed how I think this family fits together. And in sometimes what some would think of as little actions, you are always seeking to make sure that we're bringing out the best in everyone. And there's no one with your love of not just the city of Boston, but its politics, its political history, all the figures. I mean, Flaherty has some of the, the context, but Matt has the, the encyclopedic knowledge that you bring to this work. And most of all, I'm just always so excited to see you with Margot because you are the best dad. And that is, that is something that reflects what you bring to this work, too. So, I, I want to thank everyone for, again, this isn't, I'm, I'll be here plenty. But I just want to thank everyone. This has been an incredibly important space and community within this chamber that we have. And I thank you in advance for the many collaborations that we will have. I know I'm already hearing the slight commitments being put out here. And so, just incredibly grateful to be serving alongside all of you.
The chair recognizes the district council from Matapan. Counselor Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And then I'll be quick. For this is a really bad call. But first of all, Counselor Wu, and I've been sending my congratulations, congratulations. You know, we all recognize that it's hard work governing.
We all recognize it's hard work governing. And we can't do it by ourselves. And it has to be, of course, collaborative in nature, particularly when we think about COVID, mass and cash, just major issues that no one person can tackle by themselves. And so, I want to, one, bring up the energy in this space. No offense, it's historic. We should be excited, we should all be celebrating. This is amazing. This is not a funeral. And the energy in here feels like it's a funeral. So, we should be celebrating. This is incredible for the city of Boston. This is incredible for the nation. This is incredible for the world. So, congratulations. But it's not just, of course, Counselor Wu that gets the victory. I also want to thank her staff. Her staff have been here for a really long time, in terms, throughout this year. Who are dedicated. And who did the work, who are dedicated, who did the work, who got out in community. And frankly, when things could get a little political, kind of crazy at some of these neighborhood meetings, they held themselves out with integrity, class, and grace. So, thank you. You all know who you are, I'm looking at you. Thank you. And some of your team members have been here, even with previous counselors, Dave, I'm looking at you, who've been doing the work for a really long time. So, I want to applaud your team on the campaign side, on the council side, for really lifting you up and also, of course, partnering with you and partnering with us to get the job done. I also want to thank, of course, Counselor Sabi George for her courage. I am not going to be a Debbie Downer here. Life does go on, we know that. We've had challenges, life is hard. This is amazing. How blessed were we to be candidates in this city that we love. So, thank you for putting yourself out there, putting your children out there, putting your husband and all his business out there. Thank you very much for your run. Thank you for your courage and thank you for standing up. It's not easy to be an elected official, it's not easy to be a candidate. So, thank you very much. And I want to acknowledge all the incredible new counselors that are going to join us. District seven is going to have a historic woman who's going to take over that seat. That is remarkable and want to celebrate that. District four, I'm really proud of Brian. I'm so excited about his election, of course. I'm also really excited about the council colleagues. Counselor Flaherty, Mahia, who we knew would top the ticket and, you know, do really well. But thank you for your continued leadership. Thank you for agreeing to come back to this work, which we know is really hard and takes a toll on your families. And so, really appreciate all of your work. And I also want to thank the new counselors who, of course, are coming. Counselor, obviously, soon to be Counselor Rootsy. And I think Erin, as far as I can see, everything looks like it's going to be just fine. Congratulations to you and your family. And I think it's also a way for us to demonstrate, we may not be all on the same side, but as Counselor Flaherty likes to talk about friends, we can all remain friends while holding each other accountable in the work. So, my love to Counselor Wu, look forward to partnering with you on this work that is critical. And celebrating you with this short transition of time, all of us should roll up our sleeves and get to work. And to the new folks who are taking over as counselors, thank you for running, thank you for exercising the courage. And Counsel President, I don't do the pro tempore, whatever. Counsel President O'Malley, thank you for keeping us together. This was a really rocky time by a whole bunch of metrics. You came in and the first thing you said was we wanted to build up central staff, but you wanted to bring us all together to keep us connected as a family. So, thank you, and I'm.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Counselor Campbell. Okay, we're moving on to memorials now. If you are able, please stand. We are closing today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Jacqueline Gerbic. For Counselor Campbell, Jennifer Formachelli. In Virginia, Jenny Akila Parkman. For Counselor Edwards, Jimmy McLaughlin. For the chair on behalf of the entire council, Jerry Remmy. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that we adjourn today. We do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in the, here in the Ayinella Chamber two weeks from today. We are not meeting next week for Veterans Day. And by the way, thank you to our veteran on the council, Counselor Flynn, for his service to our country and all veterans of Boston. But we will be meeting again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, November 27th, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is hereby adjourned.